With that, it is just 5 o'clock. So we will convene first this evening, a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. And I will just caution our members. We have a little bit of a time constraint tonight because we give over this platform to the Board of Appeals at 7:20, but we're going to do our best to get through everything before then. So a call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. The purpose of this is to get an update from the Milton Residence Fund and the Food Pantry. And we have some of our guests. We want to put this first tonight because we've made some of our guests from the Food Pantry and the Residence Fund wait quite a long time in a previous meeting. So we want to try to get them on first tonight. So I see we have Pat Brawley, I see we have Noreen Dolan, I think we have Andrew Maloney. Pat, is there anyone else that we have from the Residence Fund? You can unmute. Hillary, could you unmute Pat Brawley, please? Do we have anyone else, Pat?
Yes, our Chairperson of the Steering Committee, Renee Tabor, is on.
Renee, okay. Renee Tabor. So we have Renee Tabor, Andrew Maloney, Noreen Dolan, Pat Brawley. Anyone else from the Residence Fund or the Food Pantry? So we'll immediately go to item two, which is an update from the Milton Residence Fund and the Food Pantry. And I will turn it over to whomever would like to take the lead here.
Pat, do you want to, if you're dying to report?
Sure, I'll start it off then. We have been very successful at continuing our serving of our 130 families over the last couple of months since the last time we met. I think it must have been in the May meeting. We are serving twice a month. This month, we will serve three times, or last month, we served three times because of the five-week month. We are averaging about 75 to 80 families coming through each time we're open. We have been successful at packing bags on Friday nights and passing them out on Saturday mornings. We've been lucky enough to have the Police Department, off-duty officers volunteering to help us on Saturday mornings with the distribution. And all has been working pretty well. We've had donations from a number of different homeowners and residents of Milton. So we've seen a really big support from the community. Renee, do you want to add to that? I know you had some other things to say.
Yeah, we've been seeing about five to eight new clients per week that we're open. And we've had probably two to three returning clients every week. Clients who used to come to the pantry, were able to stop for a while and have the need to come back. You know, as Pat said, we've received a lot of community support from Milton Police Department. Also, we've been getting fresh fruits and vegetables from the Milton Fruit Center, from Lambert's, from Brookwood Farm. And, you know, just really pleased and humbled by the outpouring of support that we've received from our Milton neighbors.
Thank you very much, Renee. Thank you, Pat. Any questions or comments from the members for the Food Pantry representatives?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Pat, I was contacted by an egg farmer from Kingston. Is your egg situation rectified itself? I know it was a concern about a month ago. So I did send him, I didn't refer him to you yet, but is that ever rectified or not?
We are fine at the moment with the Milton Food Mart reopening. And he has been able to supply the dairy products and the eggs to our participants using our voucher system, which had in the past. So at this point in time, we're fine. But if that changes, we'll reach right out to you, Richard.
Yeah, I'll give you his name. He does a lot in Quincy, but I told him the number. What are you doing, about 300 dozen? Is it a month or a week?
A month.
A month, yeah. So I gave him the number. So he was able to, so if you do, please, I'll gladly put you in contact with him.
Okay, great. One of the problems we have, unfortunately, is refrigeration space that we would have to work out with him. But I appreciate the contact. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all set. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you for your support.
Ms. Collins?
I just had a follow-up question. I'm thrilled that our off-duty officers are so generous with their time. I'm just wondering if you need some additional support because they may not always be available.
Right. We actually were going to reach out to the Fire Department, but I got a contact over there to see because we had heard that they were also interested in helping us. At this point in time, that's about all we need.
Okay.
We're covered.
Okay. I'm sure we'll get it.
I can make that connection, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Connected to Chief Grant, Pat.
Thank you so much. That would be great.
Other questions or comments on the Food Pantry specifically? So, Pat, in terms of funding, any requests at this point or anything that you foresee in the near future?
Well, Renee and I have talked about this, and I'm going to let her respond to you.
Sorry, Renee. That's okay. Thanks, Mike. We are appreciative of the emergency funding that you've already provided. And as I said, we have not been taking food donations, but we had asked for financial donations during this time. And we have, you know, received a lot of support from the folks in Milton. And so I don't think we need any additional funding right now. But we appreciate the offer and hopefully we've seen the worst of this. And, you know, we won't need to come back to you for additional monies in the near future.
Right. We've also been really fortunate that the Lambert family has supported us with donations of produce. So we've been able to not have to purchase that. So we are, in addition, they've been doing a great job for us. George Lambert is just great.
And we do have an initiative that's being launched either today or tomorrow with United Way and our neighbors in Mattapan and Dorchester and Hyde Park and Courageous Conversations for Racial Justice and the Milton Interfaith Courage Association to raise funds for those in need, the communities of Milton and our neighbors. And so you'll be hearing more on that. Melinda Collins is going to be our representative, and there'll be funding being raised for those most in need through that. So that's a really exciting thing that we're launching. I think either, if it didn't launch today, hopefully it'll launch tomorrow.
Great.
Great. That's super.
All right. If there's nothing else, and there may be something that comes up, if Renee and Pat, if you could just hang on just for a minute, I'll ask Noreen and Andrew to fill us in on the Residence Fund.
All right. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Yeah, it was making me think where the Milton Public Schools have been doing a fantastic job with the Wednesday distribution of the lunch and breakfast for any families with schoolchildren. And they've just recently started giving out the 22-pound box of vegetables from like a farmer's grant through that. And I know they're working really hard to figure out if they can continue anything in the summer. But at least the Select Board may know better than I. But at least for the meantime, it's only on through June. So I'm wondering if the Food Pantry might see an uptick for July and August because there's so much coming out of the school system, and that may end. So I know a lot of families on my end are utilizing both the Food Pantry and the school system. But, you know, there's a lot of other individuals at the Food Pantry that don't use schools. So that's the only thing on my mind of, in terms of uptick, but we can keep an eye on that.
Noreen, also a program, additional SNAP benefits for families who have SNAP that is supposed to be starting or have started. We have a weekly call with the Greater Boston Food Bank, and they've talked about it quite a bit. And it's sort of an additional funding for this sort of pandemic funding that's come from the government. And so families are supposed to have access to that additional monies as well. So if there are families that have children that are in the school lunch programs, they're supposed to get additional funding throughout the summer.
Fantastic. Okay, and that's automatically onto their SNAP card?
It'd be a separate SNAP card that comes to them in the mail.
Right. Also, who would be the coordinator of the school, the folks who receive the school lunches?
Jackie Morgan is the head of Food Services for Milton Public Schools, and she's been working her butt off. She's been really doing amazing.
I mean, maybe we can connect with her and determine if there's a way for us to provide additional support to that program. The problem that we have right now is that we are only open twice a month. So our need to provide the weekly service will be limited, but we can certainly talk about trying to work something out.
Ms. Collins?
Oh, I just wanted to mention, and I know that Pat and I had talked about the fact that Project Bread is, and I think maybe, Noreen, you and I talked about this as well, that they will help complete those updated applications for the additional SNAP benefits. And they've really been trying to get people to do that. I mean, they'll get you at least 90% of the way through the application process. So that's something. But it would be good to know sooner rather than later what's happening with that, just in case we need to try to figure out something else.
Yeah, I know a decent number of families in Milton are really scared to get SNAP because of immigration status. So I think that is certainly a barrier for some of our local families.
Yeah. So, yes, if you cannot coordinate with the public schools, that helps us know. Thank you.
Yeah, you can reach out to Jackie and try to see what the need is and how we could possibly help.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? So I did have a conversation with Glenn Pavlicek, Assistant Supervisor. He is following this very closely. You're correct, it does end on June 30th by, you know, normal years, but obviously the COVID situation is critical. So they're hopeful that this gets extended through the summer. I know Mayor Walsh has spoken very loudly about this as well for his city. So I'm sure Jackie will hear right away if this is extended through the summer. Which would, obviously, for both of you, especially you, Pat, it will hopefully take any additional pressure because 3,500 meals a week, that's a lot that they're giving out. That's a lot of food.
A lot of food.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good point, Richard. And it's important to make that connection now because although they are seeking funding, you know, you never know, right? So it's good to make that connection now so we can see in the event that it doesn't come through. Noreen, I feel like, and I think we, I feel like we interrupted you a little bit, so I just want to...
Sorry, no, yeah. I was distracted on the food thing. But, yeah, and I know the audio is a bit jumpy today, so if you guys can't hear me, just raise your hand at some point.
You're coming through loud and clear to me.
Okay. All right, good. Maybe it's just my end, my junky internet. But so in terms of the Milton Residence Fund, so kind of pulling some numbers through the overall umbrella of the Milton Residence Funds that has a couple of different funds within it, we've distributed about $25,000 in the past 30 days, about $40,000 over the months of April and May. When I look back to the beginning sort of of COVID here, so around March 1st, I'd say, I've given out 20, no, sorry, 79 total gifts to 40 families. So there's like a core group of about 40 families that are just really struggling and always on the edge. And of course, any income loss, you know, really devastates them. So there have been multiple gifts to these families, but they constitute, say, a $100 grocery gift card for essential items that maybe can't be received, you know, maybe paper goods or Tylenol or things like that that can't be got at the Food Pantry. Then maybe assistance for utility and a rental assistance, so kind of multiple tiers to, and a lot of the times it was to bolster them until unemployment came through. And it has seemed to come through for most of the families that I work with. Most of the gifts were, like I said, emergency essentials, grocery items for specific medical dietary needs, like diabetes or things. Some rent. A lot of people have obviously huge anxiety about the utility bills climbing up. Generally, I don't utilize the Milton Residence Funds and the Governor Stoughton Funds until somebody has a shut-off notice because, you know, you want to know that, like documentation of the crisis. But right now, I was... A utility bill that had a notation on it that said "seriously delinquent" or "significantly passed due," you know, something that triggered in my mind that there was more significant warnings. I was approving those as well. But most people are sort of hanging tight and just watching their bills growing higher and higher. So there's a lot of anxiety growing, but I wasn't sure of, like, releasing the floodgates to everybody who had any type of a rearage on a utility bill. So with that being said, I feel like at some point, once the state of emergency is declared over by Governor Baker, then within 45 days of that, the utility companies can start releasing notices to quit. And that may be akin to a tsunami at some point. But we do still have, you know, plenty of funding available, so I feel like we can handle that. Let's see. Of the total 110,000 granted from Governor Stoughton of the two different deposits, 58,353 has been spent. So about 51,000 remains. So obviously, still a significant amount of, you know, cash on hand to be utilized. Similarly, in talking about the utilities, it's the renter arriges, notices to quit, obviously, as you guys are well aware, and mortgage foreclosure notices, all that, you know, are on hiatus. But I don't know, mortgage companies, maybe, I'm hoping, you know, they'll just end, you know, lump whatever owed on the end of a mortgage. But rent, property owners may really need their income. So we may see a significant number of notices to quit at that time. So I am referring people to raft the State Rental Assistance Program so that they can get rental assistance now. The income guidelines are tighter, 50% of AMI. So a lot of families in Milton, once they get unemployment, they're like already over the 50% AMI, although not by much. But I've had a couple of families that have been able to get through that. So, yeah. I think, I mean, I'm still, I still feel like I'm able to handle all their costs coming in. We have funding available. May was quite, I thought maybe it would ramp up in May, but only nine gifts were given out in May. And that was, I had 10 requests and nine went through. So, and a couple of those were medical bills, like unpaid medical bills that people couldn't do, or utilities, food essentials. That's compared to 18 gifts given the previous May. But those were all utility shut-offs. Utility companies love the month of May because after the winter moratorium, they'll start sending out notices, and we didn't have those this month. So, yeah, it's still kind of handling stuff. But there is something bubbling beneath the surface. You can feel like the anxiety really creeping up. But the level of need hasn't really reached me yet. I put a recent announcement in the Milton Times to, you know, thank you to all the donors and, you know, letting people know to reach out to me because I keep wanting to make sure the message is front and center that people can reach out. So are there any specific questions, things I haven't called?
Yeah, I don't know if any, Mr. Maloney wants to add anything before we open up to questions or comments from the members or...
No, I just, thank you, Mr. Zalesor, Mike. Just like to say thank you to the trustees for their support of the Milton Residence Fund and for stepping up this spring during the crisis. Been thrilled with the response that Noreen has provided, and we're happy to be of help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Questions or comments from the members on the Milton Residence Fund or the Food Pantry for that matter? Mr. Wells?
I have one, but I think, Katie, do you have a question? I saw you popped up.
No, I didn't. Go ahead, Richard.
So if you could just make sure both the Governor and Secretary Kenealy, Mayor Walsh, a lot, if you get hit with someone moving to quit or moving to evict, if you could just let Mr. Dennehy know, especially if it, I, there've been a couple of articles saying this is inevitable, it will happen, but I don't think we'll get a tsunami of it, but we may get someone if we can help them. Please just kind of keep us aware of that, okay?
Like if property owners are issuing notices to quit?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes.
So, yes, I luckily have not seen that yet come across my desk. A couple mortgage companies, or at least one woman I was talking to today, said she's repeatedly reached out to her mortgage company, and they said, no, they won't, you know, pause anything or adjust anything related to COVID. And so she was asking me for my advice, and I'm like, oh, I'm not a mortgage expert. But I researched a couple of links and sent them to her. Melinda?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, well, that was my question. Did you have a housing counselor to send her to? Because I can find somebody for you.
Okay, yeah, I did not refer you.
Yeah, so I'll, how about I collect some names for you, and then you can just have them? And there are a couple of things, we're still working on some rent assistance. Of course, it's, as you said, the AMI, I wish were a little higher, you know, it's 50% below, but we're working on some, something there. And also joining a regional community development block grant for microenterprises. So that's employees five or less and AMI of 80% or lower. So I would imagine, you know, especially at the end of July, you might, you might actually start to have some people who have small businesses like that. So once that's up and running, I'll send you all that information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Pardon me. Any other comments or, am I unmuted? Any other comments or questions from the members?
Just thank you.
Yeah, just thank you. And if either the Food Pantry or the Residence Fund have any future needs, you should come back as right away to us for consideration. It sounds like you're both doing well right now and have some sufficient funding, but we're happy to, in this crisis, to do what we can to help.
Thank you so much for your support.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Brawley, Ms. Tabor, Ms. Dolan, and Mr. Maloney, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Thanks for your support. We appreciate it.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Governor Stoughton Fund.
So moved.
Motion's been made?
Second.
It's been made, second, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Our meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund is adjourned. We will now welcome you to the, the day is this, June 3rd, 2020, Meeting in the Milton Select Board. And before we begin, please join us as we recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that, and thank you to Mike Lynch for the graphic. Before we begin, before we go to item three, two items, one technical and one important, very important. First, on the technical side, we've been advised by the town council that there's a possibility of the chat function on Zoom being used to frustrate the requirements of the open meeting law by allowing side conversations. So as some of the towns have done, and after our law firm, our town council had sought some guidance from the Attorney General's Office, we have, on the instruction of county council, disabled the chat function. The idea is our open meeting is not for the purpose of having side conversations, and chat function could provide a forum for some side conversations between members and such. So we've disabled that function. It wasn't used in any way. There were a couple of times it was used for people to say they were, they were leaving. There are a couple of residents used it once or twice, but we'll keep this just like a normal open meeting. That's number one. Number two, and quite a bit more important, the Milton family lost a very cherished member just the other day. Kim Casey was a 32-year employee of the DPW. By all accounts, she was someone who took great pride in her work. She was appreciated by so many. She took great pride in her position with the town. And so I would ask everyone to take a moment of silence, the memory of Kim Casey. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair? Give me a moment of intelligence. Just a moment. Now, Kim Casey came to work here at the age of 21 years old. She was a young girl. I believe historically that she's the only woman to ever work in the operations section of the Milton Public Works. I know of no other woman in my life that I've known. She came in as a young girl. She was married very early to her husband, Richard Ben Casey, who was also a career second-generation town employee. She started, anyone who remembers us, she started out, she used to clean the square and cut the grass. And I think she said poison ivy more than anyone I've ever known in my life. And she could recognize poison ivy from 100 yards away. But as time went on, she really grew in the DPW and became a foreman and just an essential member. Her and Ben, when you're in the police department, you weren't, especially as a young supervisor, you weren't pretty quickly how important the DPW was to you, whether it's the wind, snow, ice, street closures, water main breaks in the middle of the night when it's 10 below zero and everyone else is home and bed, and you have to call them, they have to come out and hit it right away, or 100-inch snow winter. Kim was always there for this community. Six years ago, in a snowstorm, Kim ran a crew, she ran the crew, she did the neighborhoods, both to the Reeddale Road, all the streets off of it. It's kind of amazing because when she first started, she drove a small pickup truck, and when she left, she was driving the biggest sterling snow pile that the town owned. And she was rushed to the hospital, and she was diagnosed that day with stage four breast cancer. And to be honest, I thought then, as many did, that that was the end of her life. But she was determined to come back. I can remember that going through therapy is one of the things she did. She was a tough girl. Tough upbringing, but she really cared about the community and her job. She would put bricks in a backpack. And she decided that when she could hike from the parking lot of the Blue Hills Trailside Museum to the top of the ski resort, top of Blue Hills, and back twice, she would be strong enough to return to work. In the five years that have passed, she's worked nearly every day as a foreman of the DPW with stage four breast cancer. She never made it to the point where she was ever in remission. She never made it to the point where, and I know this is presby, but any woman will relate to this, that she was ever even able to have a mastectomy. And most people never knew this. She'd walk to the town hall, handle our water issues, and go for chemo every Thursday of her life. And the reason I bring this up is this was her family. She really, really, even till the last days, she fought as hard as she could. I just want to say thank you to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. We will have public comment, just as we have since we began these remote meetings back in March. And that is, we will have Hillary Wade, our Executive Secretary, unmute all the lines. And those wishing to participate in citizen speech will state their name. And if they're participating by phone, please state the last four digits of your phone number so we can identify you for the purposes of unmuting you when your turn comes. So we'll ask, we'll open the lines, ask everyone, everyone who wants to participate in citizen speech to state their names. We'll take that list, then we will mute all the lines again. We'll take that list, then we will mute all the lines again and unmute each individual on that list when it's their turn to participate in citizen speak. So, I hope that's clear. So, we're going to ask Hillary Wade, our Executive Secretary, to unmute all the lines and anyone wishing to participate in public comment, please state your name. And then, if you're on my phone, please state the last four digits of your phone. So, Hillary, you'll let me know when all the lines are unmuted?
They are unmuted now. You can see some people have pre-muted themselves.
Okay, that's fine. I will ask anyone wishing to participate in citizen speak to state your name now. And if you're participating by phone, please state your, the last four digits of your phone number.
Cindy Christensen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7.
Incessant. Okay. Anyone else wishing to participate in public comment? Okay, so I will ask Hillary to mute all the lines again and unmute Cindy Christensen's line for the purpose of public comment.
All set, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, Cindy, you can go ahead.
Hi, I'm Cindy Christensen. I'm Town Meeting Member for Precinct 7 and I live at 59 Collmar. As a Precinct 7 Town Meeting Member, I have a moral and ethical responsibility to share information about some of the select boards and the Milton's MCAC representatives' proposals and recommendations that have not been adequately shared with the public and that left unchecked could cause a reduction in Precinct 7 residents' health, quality of life, and property values. I have tried to handle this outside of public view, but the select board's responses have been nonexistent or woefully inadequate. The MCAC representative does not respond to me at all. Here's the problem. The select board and our MCAC representative have submitted recommendations for flight path changes to the MIT study that, if adopted, will cause arrival jets flying at about 2,000 feet to fly directly over homes in Precinct 7. Why? Our MCAC representative insists that this most-used arrival path to Logan is about 250 feet from his home. It is not. Many residents have told him and the select board members that he is wrong. Even our town administrator knows that he is wrong, but this board continues to enable these inaccuracies, much like they did with the recommendation for runway 27 departures. After three and a half months of Boston Fair Skies grassroots meetings, emails, postings, and ads, and even a presentation, the runway 27 departure recommendation has been corrected. Now we need to protect the residents of Precinct 7. There are two submitted flight path and modifications for study that will affect Precinct 7 residents. One fans the straight-in path eastwardly over Franklin Street, then the intersection of Howe and Wood Streets, and next to Emerson Road and Alvin Avenue before crossing into Quincy. The second submitted modification for study is based on an idea I proposed back in 2018, but because our representative, because our representative is wrong about the current flight path, this good idea becomes a bad one for those in Precinct 7. We know that the FAA approved an approach path that joins the straight-in path at three miles from the runway end at a 25-degree angle. However, combining this with our MCAC representative's incorrect current path results in a dispersed flight path that is directly over homes in Precinct 7. Precinct 7 residents, if you do not know that these were submitted for further study by the town months ago, it is because there was no public discussion of them. The MCAC representative claimed an urgent next-day deadline and the select board voted to allow him to submit his latest proposal to the MCAC without review by the public or even the town's airplane noise advisory committee. There was no next-day MCAC deadline. Residents of each Milton deserve to be notified. If the planes are a source of concern and stress for you and your family, please write or call and demand transparency and a guarantee that residents of Precinct 7 will not be the victim of misguided efforts by those who are supposed to represent and protect us. You can find the suggested flight path changes by searching on the town's website using the words dispersion graphics. If you want more information, you can call me at 617-322-9323 or ask to be added to the Boston Fair Skies email list. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Hillary, if you could mute all the lines. I, I don't, except for the members and Mr. Dennehy. For the members, we do have public comment response as item 17. We have a lot of pressing items. I don't know if we want to take a moment on that or not, but I want to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think we should take it up now.
I agree.
You know, citizens-
Just, Katie, just for a second, without objection, we'll, we'll take item 17, which is public comment response. Ms. Conlon?
Yeah, I mean, citizen speak is not to be used as a platform to put out phone numbers and encourage people to join organizations. What I really want to respond to is the comment about runway 27. The, the reason that runway, we've had some success with runway 27 has nothing to do with a private group putting out ads in the newspaper and letters to the editor and multiple Facebook posts. It has everything to do with the work that our CAC representative did. And it was, the result that we got was consistent with what the initial request was, which was that we take part in the study, we have a seat at the table, and you can probably speak to this better than I can, Mr. Chair. The result is that Roselandale has withdrawn their initial request and they're not even pursuing it. And the result is a good one for the town and it is thanks to the current CAC representative's work. It has nothing to do with a Facebook campaign or an ad in the Milton Times. And frankly, that's more than enough said and we shouldn't, I'm not even, I'll watch the tape and if we have to respond to anything else that was said, I'll respond to it at a future meeting as far as I'm speaking as one member of the board. But, you know, this is, we have a lot of important things on our agenda tonight. We've just, we have already had an important station. We're dealing with a lot of issues relating to COVID and to continue to have citizen speak relating to issues on airplanes that are just not accurate and it, citizen speak does not help anybody. It's certainly not helping the town.
And, and I will just add, just, Katie, because you mentioned it, the, on runway 27, we made a request in our reports and report and recommendation last June. This group thought we did the wrong thing, but we made no correction. We, we did what we thought was right. And as a result of what we did, as you suggested, the result is that the MIT study, they adopted, their redesign that was adopted would only be so that the runway 27 waypoint relate location would not shift traffic to neighborhoods to the east that are already exposed to arriving traffic heading to landings on runway 4A, 4L, and 4R, namely, the Boston neighborhood of Mattapan and Milton. This was a great result on runway 27 because of what our MCAC rep has done and what we, the, the tack that we took back in June of 2019. So, you know, we've had our MCAC rep in two weeks ago to explain all these things, so I think, I think we can leave it at that. Any other comments, a public comment response?
I just wanted you two to be able to respond. That's, well, was my own concern.
All right.
Thank you both.
All right. All right, so that's item 17, it's taken care of. We'll move on to item four, which is one of the important items, one of the very important items here, and that is the COVID-19 update. We have, as guests, I think we have Bob, we definitely have Frank Schroth, I don't know, and we do have Bob Kiss. So, Hillary, if you could unmute Frank Schroth and Bob Kiss for a discussion of the virtual town meeting, status of the virtual town meeting under item 4A. Bob and Frank, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a couple of things. We are proceeding at pace, assuming that we're going to get the enabling legislation that would authorize representative town meetings like Milton's to proceed. As of my best information today, that is, I'm not sure the two Senate and House have reconciled. I know it hasn't been signed by the governor. I did get an update yesterday that individual folks are hopeful that that gets done by Friday. So, I think, as you know, our process is, we've got to provide 10 days' notice to the town meeting members and the citizens before that we're going to go virtual. That would be this Friday, the 5th. So, what I've done, on the following assumption, I sent a letter into your inboxes just a few minutes ago, and it's basically complying with the legislation as it exists today, which is the moderator's formal recommendation to the select board to conduct a virtual town meeting. That would then trigger you to conduct a vote. And once you conduct a vote, the clerk then has some tasks, like notify the Attorney General, include some papers, and then we post the notice out. Now, how could we go forward without the legislation? A new clause, Section 15, was added that allowed, that enables our work to go on retroactively if the legislation is passed within 15 days of our town meeting and we're in that window right now. So, we're left with a choice. Do we bet that it's going to get done, you know, in, by the 15th and proceed at pace? And if it, if it does, we're all good. If it doesn't, there's a current clause, Chapter 39, I think, Section 10, where the moderator can reschedule the town meeting up to 30 days. So, if we get up to the 14th or whatever it is and we don't have that legislation passed, what I would recommend we do is, let's, if you agree to go to the virtual route, assume it's going to work, can reschedule on the 12th, 13th, or 14th. We can push it out 30 days and then wait to see if a virtual happens or then go to one of our in-person meetings like the high school gym or the football field. So, that's the latest news. I can get to you, we're doing training, we're contacting members, we've got a design, we're doing all this stuff, but that's where we are right now.
Bob, let me ask you this, and I'll open it up for questions and comments, but let me ask you, ask you this. If we decided, took that vote based on your request next Wednesday, does that give us enough time to, to do what we need to do? In other words, we, if we need, what, what do we need to do in order to comply? I don't want to run out of time, right? So-
Right. It's, I think we need to post by Friday.
By this Friday or?
Friday the 5th. We need 10 days' notice before the 15th, according to the current legislation.
So, we would have to, so then we, we need to vote tonight to accept your request?
Yes, or conduct an ad hoc tomorrow somehow and do it, right?
Okay. You know, I, well, questions or comments from the members? Ms. Collins?
Well, actually, Katie, who's president of the Mass Select Boards Association, and I, we're just attending a webinar from the MMA on this, and I feel comfortable, we were, we were just starting to listen to Lexington when we had to come to our meeting and their experience. And, I mean, I, I feel comfortable following that path that Bob laid out, that, that we could move forward. And if for some reason the legislation didn't materialize, then we could go that second route and he could postpone. But I do have one question. You had at least one training, maybe two, and I was wondering how you felt it went?
We've held four so far.
Four, okay.
Yes. I think we're getting positive feedback from it. I think the only thing people are missing, I believe, is, let's call it the social aspect.
Yes.
Not only being in person, but with the Zoom webinar technology, you're unable to see your fellow members in the room, unlike Zoom meeting here. And so that's the thing we're really, I think they're missing that, who, who am I in the room with? And we have no way to overcome that while still preserving the, that core voting pool, which is what we really are optimizing for. Other than that, I think we're addressing their questions. And my other, the other challenge we have is getting emails out to our members is proving a problem. I think it's getting stuck in spam filters or addresses are wrong, we're not getting bounce backs, people are having trouble getting them, they're finding them in spam filters. So, we are doing everything we can think of to reach the members and let them know that we're going down this route, but we have not confirmed, probably 100 people we haven't heard from in one way or another at all, members.
So, how confident are you feeling that this will work then?
I think we'll get 145, so I'm confident we'll get a quorum. And as a last minute, I've talked to Glenn Pavlicek of the school system, and he, we can borrow his robocall, upload a list of names and numbers, and I will use my mellifluous tones to let them know, check the spam filter because there's emails in there.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members?
I just would like to say, in response to Melinda's question, I was on the training for Precinct 3 last night, and Bob, it was an excellent training session, and I thought that everyone was able to adapt very well to the use of the Zoom webinar. So, it seemed to go very well and I, I think Bob conducted a great program.
Tried to make it simple, yeah.
My question's related to Katie. So, following up on what Bob's concern is, do you have any idea, Katie, how many of your town meeting members from your precinct were on the Zoom, on the meeting last night?
I think, Bob, there'd be nine or 10, Bob.
You had 14 from your precinct, so about half.
Okay. And now, is, is each precinct's getting two? Is there two dates for each precinct? Is that what it is?
We schedule one per precinct, but any member can go to any session.
Anyone, I get it.
Same link, just show up, right?
Okay.
So, if anyone's listening, so we're doing six and eight tonight, six and eight tomorrow, Thursday, the 4th. We're doing six and eight on Monday, the 8th. And then we'll have a final catch-up on Sunday night, the 14th, for the newly elected and anybody we missed.
So, so Bob, I think we should, we should adopt a motion to accept your request to conduct a virtual town meeting and then get the notice out Friday. Is that, is that, is that, will that give you what you need?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. I'll make the motion, yep, I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Any further discussion?
No.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Who else?
Yes.
As long as yes. All right, Bob, you're off. So, tell us, notice we need to put out on Friday, and we'll do it, and, and we'll make this happen.
Okay, so, Mike, emails in your inbox and others through to forward around, and I'm off to go do training. So, thanks for the support.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thank you, Bob. And Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
How much you getting paid? He didn't answer me.
A lot of time.
A lot of time, yeah. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Item 4B, and I want to apologize to our item 5 people, we are, we're going to get there pretty fast, I think, but, but, but we just need to get through a couple more items. We do have some other guests too, so I'm going to go to item 4B, which is a discussion of our summer camps with our park commissioners. I saw Regina Mally, I think I saw, is Ted Carroll on the line? Is that right? And, 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 I'm sorry, Scott McKay.
Scott was there. I saw Scott, I see Regina.
Yeah, Ted Carroll's here.
So, so Hillary, if you could, if you could unmute Scott McKay, who's still muted, Regina Mally, and Ted Carroll, and they can lead us to the discussion of our summer camps. So, Regina?
I think Scott was going to speak, but happy to.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can.
All right, good, good. Sorry about that, my internet's down, so I'm on a, I'm on a call and you can't see my beautiful face, so I apologize. But, thanks for having us and thanks for inviting us. We, we've been working over probably the past three or four weeks, ever since the governor came out and kind of introduced Phase 1 through Phase 4 of opening and kind of how that affects parks and recreation, in particular, summer camps and summer sporting camps, and also just parks in reference in general. But, so we've had a series of four meetings now, and we've kind of dissected what the governor's put out in terms of guidelines, and we made some decisions based on that. We had a meeting today to go further discuss the possibility for the camp and what the restrictions and guidelines look like under Phase 2. And we made the decision as a commission, and we've had Mike Dennehy and also Caroline Cancela consult on a couple different issues. But as a staff and as a commission and Department of Public Health, we didn't get to meet all the requirements that the state has to open up our summer camp Phase 2. But just based on-
Scott, you're breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Give us that again, if you could, Scott.
Hello?
I just heard, I just heard that. Can you give us the last, about 20 seconds of what you're saying?
All right, well, we figured as a commission and as a staff, in concert with Department of Public Health and Mike Dennehy, that we just don't think we can operate the camp under Phase 2, but we do think that by the beginning of July, perhaps the second week in July, when we move into Phase 3, we will be able to meet the state guidelines on that. So, primarily, we just, we made the decision as a commission to move forward, and plan to open up a summer camp from the beginning of July, July 13th through August 14th. There's some limitations with what we can do, but essentially, the hours would be somewhere between 9:00 and 1:00 p.m., and we operate for that five to six-week period, so. Ted, Regina, do you have anything else that I missed?
No, I think, just to add, I mean, the camp will be very different from what kids are used to and what parents are used to, because of these restrictions and everyone's safety, you know, in mind. So, like Scott said, shortened day, you know, 9:00 to 1:00, instead of the typical, you know, I think it's 8:30 to 3:00, only Monday through Thursday, taking Fridays off to do a deep clean, there will be cleanings throughout the week as well, throughout the day, but a deep clean on Friday. You know, there's, unfortunately, we don't have a place for shelter in place. If it rains, you've got to come get your kid, because we don't have indoors. So, there's going to be, you know, a few different, you know, things, but we think we can do it, and we're really hopeful to do it.
The camp would also be limited to 100 kids. We feel that just the, you know, the 250 or almost 300 that we normally get would just be limited to 100.
Thank you, Ted, thank you, Regina, thank you, Scott. Questions or comments from the members? Mr. Wells?
Oh, go ahead, I want to go first.
I was just wondering, is it, since you can only take 100 campers, is it first come, first served? Yeah?
Yes, yeah, it's that way in normal circumstances.
Right, right.
Because it's an online registration, but yeah, it would be first come campers.
So do you already actually have 100 campers?
We haven't opened up registration yet. We do need to get, you know, approval of the Board of Health to go live with this, but we expect that we will.
The state regulations on this, they do limit, you know, with social distancing in mind, they ask for campers to be with, you know, six feet away from each other, and they also limit the amount of folks that can be together at any one point, and it's campers per one staff person. So, just based on the number of staff we expect to hire, the 100 is where we can be at comfortably, and still meet the regulations. One thing we did have some, the staff had some conversations with Cunningham Park, expanding the...
Scott, you broke up a little bit again, can you give us the last 10 seconds? We kind of lost you there.
Sure. Cunningham Park extended the footprint of what we can access, so the green space will be bigger than what it has been in the past, just to keep social distancing in mind for the program. So, again, we're limited to the amount of kids that we can have, just based on ratios, and also to try to accomplish some of the social distancing guidelines that the states produced.
Other comments or questions? I think Mr. Wells had a comment or question.
Just two points, thanks, Mr. Chair, thank you, Scott. So firstly, I just want to commend your operation staff, because I don't think I've ever seen our parks used more in my life, and I don't mean for organized sports, I mean, people just wanting to put their feet in grass. It's the most amazing things I've ever seen. If you don't think cabin fever is affecting people, just look at our parks every time the sun comes up. But my last question is, will we have any organized sports, any of our summer leagues at all, even in Phase 3 this summer? Do you anticipate that?
Awesome, awesome question. We've been anticipating some additional guidance from the Commonwealth, and Regina had, we had a meeting this afternoon to prepare for tonight, and Regina was scouring the internet and came across guidelines that were actually released today for sports leagues and summer sports camps entering Phase 2. And we do believe we can meet all those requirements, and we're going to be working with state guidelines, and also kind of adding on top of that our own Department of Health guidelines, and having a working document between the park office and the sports leagues that say that this is what our protocol, this is what our guidelines are going to be, this is what we're going to adhere to when we use the field. So there's some sort of an agreement between the two entities. We expect that to open, we're waiting for the governor to make the official announcement on Monday. We believe there's going to be a press conference officially moving the state into Phase 2, and if that's the case, we'll be able to open up fields for league use. Again, with some restrictions, there can't be groups of 10 or more, so it's going to be more like practicing, doing drills in certain areas, there's not, there is not an allowance in Phase 2 for games, organized games, or inter-team games or anything like that. But kids will be able to participate in a league or a sports program, starting on, we're expecting Tuesday, the 9th. So, it's really hopeful what we came across today, and we're just hoping that the governor, again, makes the announcement Monday that we can move into Phase 2.
I'll give you a little bit of advanced intel. So I know that Milton uses the two fields, particularly the baseball field at the back of Houghton's, quite a bit for our organized sports. DCR has done an unbelievable amount of work on those two fields in the past week, the infield, lines, everything. So, I'd say if they're doing that, I think that you're probably going to get some good news from the governor's office, at least for Phase 3, I think. And I think that's a good thing. I think, I think anything we can do to bring some structure and normalcy back, especially to our kids, is a great thing, right? So, thank you for that, thank you to the three of you for having me.
Yes, I just want to recognize the other two commissioners and staff, and just support that we've received from the town. I think this has been a group effort, and we all see, at least from the park side of things, that this is a we process and not a me, you, and they process. So we appreciate the support that we've gotten from you guys, and I just want to recognize all the hard work that the staff's really put forward in trying to meet the needs of our kids and our, you know, summer program and sports leagues that are out there. So, thank you, guys.
Any other question?
Any other questions or comments from the members?
Hopefully, only in a couple more months for that black truck, Scott, for the three of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all for your work putting this together, we appreciate all you're doing.
Great, thank you so much, guys.
And just to add, you know, Scott and Regina and Ted, and all of the members of your department, Bonnie DeBoer, Paul DiBano, and I'll forget a lot of them, but...
Don't forget Kevin Crissom.
Kevin Crissom.
Forget Kevin.
You know, for the professionalism and the collaboration and the teamwork, and the fact that you all have been just right on top of this, and thank you so much for that, and, you know, all our kids are going to benefit, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you for that. So, item, and I want to try to move as quickly as possible, if you want to get to item 5. Item 5C, Mr. Dennehy, is this a quick one, or should I put this...
Yes, this is very quick, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the board. So, basically, I'm just notifying you and the viewing audience that on Friday, I will file our certification letter on behalf of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, which people are, may not be aware, is called the CARES Act. Again, it's the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Basically, the state of Massachusetts received this funding for municipalities with less than $500,000. Milton qualifies, or could qualify, for a little over $2.4 million of non-operating budget-related expenses due to COVID-19. So, I have to thank our town accountant and all our department heads, they've been scouring to try to make the new normal, normal, and in doing so, we will be submitting our first certification to the State House in the amount of $149,750. Again, this is for FY '20 expenditures, COVID-19-related. We will continue, I assume, as the pandemic continues, to accrue expenses, it's a biweekly report our town accountant has to submit, it all gets audited by Mass Division of Local Services and Mass Partner Revenue, but this is the first one, which is due on Thursday, Friday, the 5th.
Questions or comments from the members? Thank you to Mike for your efforts, and to Amy and to all of your staff. This is a good start, and there'll be more to come, more to come, as I understand it on this.
Yes, and the only other thing I'll add, there is a piece of it that FEMA reimburses for us, this is a separate part, the CARES Act is separate funding, and there's an algorithm that 75% of what's not reimbursed by FEMA can be reimbursed under the CARES Act. This is the first step in a long process, but we'll wait for that funding to be available, and then reimburse the line department, so it's not coming out of their operating expenditures.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Item 5D, 4D, rather, I just want to reference this quickly, because we want to get to Item 5. Item 4D is an update on the Nippon's Neighbors Together Fund. We have signed the work plan along with Councilors Arroyo and Campbell and the United Way. We are grateful to be able to work with our neighbors in Mattapean and Hyde Park and Dorchester to try to get funding to those who are most needy. We appreciate the leadership of Councilors Campbell and Arroyo on this, and we thank the United Way and Courageous Conversations towards Racial Justice, who really drove this initiative, along with the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. So, that should, as I mentioned in the Governor Stotin meeting, that should be, that should be rolling out tomorrow. So, good news on that. So, Item 5, this is a discussion, and I think we have all of our participants here. We, the title of the discussion is Creating and Living in a Community That Practices Equity and Justice for All. Let me, let me just preface this briefly. When there is injustice and murder in Minneapolis, we feel it here in Milton. When there is injustice and murder in Georgia or Louisville, we feel it here in Milton. When there's latent racism that is shown patent in Central Park in New York, we feel it here in Milton. When there's racism and injustice anywhere, we feel it here in Milton. This is unfortunately nothing new, but it has been brought home in stark relief in recent weeks. And so, we have reached out for help and guidance, and we reached out to Courageous Conversations and the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, and we are fortunate this evening to be joined by Karen Gross-Horen, the co-founder of Courageous Conversations toward racial justice. We are joined by Reverend, pardon me, Reverend Noble Shepers, a Milton resident, who was a priest at the Marshfield Trinity Episcopal Church and a racial justice advocate, and Reverend Lisa Ward, the minister of First Pat Harris Church, a member of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, and a member of the Courageous Conversations leadership team. So, we will now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board Chair Zulis, and the whole Milton Select Board, we really appreciate your time and your interest in talking more about this critical time and a pivotal time in our history, as if COVID-19 wasn't bad enough, and the unfortunate toll it's taken on Black and Brown lives, due to the inequities that exist in systems that continue to marginalize people of color. It's really a critical time in history. So, this is the work of Courageous Conversations, and we've been amidst the work for four years, and I think it just, it was meant to be that we have been on this path for four years, building to this moment where we feel we have strength, and we have energy, and we have a platform and collaboration, and, you know, the possibility to create things like we did with Milton and Councilors Arroyo and Campbell, to establish a fund that supports our neighbors across bridges and across the river. So, we have a following of over 600 that have been to events over our four years, and that we continue to communicate within our listserv, and who show up for all kinds of things for Courageous Conversations. So, with what's happening around us, and the negativity that swirls around this terrible racial injustice, you know, there is no neutral in this justice and equity work. It's either you're stopped, or you're driving full head, full steam ahead. There's no neutral when Black lives continue to be dispensable and disposable day after day. There is no neutral when some benefit from systemic racism without challenging its horrific and inherent evils that continue to benefit some while marginalizing others based solely on the race that they were born into. This is the work of Courageous Conversations towards racial justice. White people are just as important as people of color, if not more important, in this work of racial justice. When you call out racism and demand justice, this matters. When you use social media platforms to discuss what you're learning about implicit bias, it matters. When you point your friends and family members to leaders and authors and movie producers and directors of color, this matters. When you call evil, evil, it matters. Complicity is sitting silently by as racist systems learn how to adapt without consequence in our generation, this unbroken chain of terror that has existed for centuries. So, have a good answer when your great grandchildren or great nieces or nephews ask you what you did during the rampant abuse of Black and Brown bodies in our time. Use your voice and raise it with courage and conviction. So when Mike reached out to ask us to have, you know, lead a conversation on this at this Select Board meeting, a few people naturally occurred to me, and Milton resident, and I'll say a co-advocate in the racial justice movement was Noble Scapers. And, so with that, I will just hand it over to Noble, and I think his lifetime experience has really led him perhaps to lead forward in this moment of crisis and pivotal historical relevance. So, Noble, take it away.
Good evening all. Firstly, I am a native of South Africa, and I was an anti-apartheid activist during the 70s and 1980s, part of the 1990s. And my experience firstly, that the use of violence by the police, especially against Black people, and I'm trying to try to correlate what we've experienced here in the United States. This has implications not just in terms of individuals' pain and suffering, or the workings of the criminal justice system, but it also causes a social problem that ripples throughout society. I was appointed chairman of the Community Police Forum in Cape Town from 1996 to 2002, and one major issue associated in my experience with police brutality is that it negatively impacts the relationship between police and the public. Bearing in mind that the main objective of the police in a democratic democracy is to police communities in partnership with the members of that community. So it was a travesty that the public was gradually losing confidence in the police as the police themselves became offenders. So that does pose the question, what has caused police officers to become offenders and suspects, to be victims of police violence? The pressure on police officers to meet, I guess each of them have their targets that they've got to present, but it does give context to the problems of police brutality. And due to the pressure to meet these projections that the police have, police officers rely on sometimes, more often than not, illegal methods of operating, such as aggression, beatings, strangulation, suffocation, slapping and kicking to coerce suspects to hand over and to admit to whatever things the police see to be illegal. Such actions cannot be condoned under any circumstances because there are other more appropriate and legitimate methods that the police can apply to ensure that members of the public cooperate in crime prevention. And this notion is a matter of concern because it suggests that the effectiveness of the police service is measured by the number of arrests, by the number of beatings, assaults that they do, and whether the operational mandate equates to a projected statistical target each year. In this context, the national goal of community policing service is marginalized and even completely ignored. So question is posed, does the use of force become a ritual if it is accepted as an effective strategy to solve problems? And if the victim's suffering and pain run the risk of becoming irrelevant to the law? As the victim becomes isolated at the moment when he or she is in need of the law's protection? So in my experience, and I don't know how much this can be implemented, police training is lacking in two areas, namely interviewing skills and a legal approach to restrain a suspect. The trainees that the police get do not speak to the challenges that they encounter when executing their duties on the street. The absence of an appropriate approach to certain crime situations resulted in adoption of illegal methods of restraining and arresting, as well as, I want to say banned, methods of interrogation that are against the law and a violation of human rights, even of the suspects. Therefore, in town and state, the authorities need to provide police officers with explicit instructions on how to meet projected targets. Because if not, they will revert to illegal methods of violence since the potential for quote-unquote "going rogue" is very high. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission in South Africa held public hearings, reviewed historical documents, and interviewed hundreds of people. They issued a report calling for official apologies, public monuments, a community justice center, a police review board, and anti-racism training for police and other officials. The Truth and Reconciliation Process established a spirit of forgiveness that helped the country transcend hundreds of years of hatred and violence and liberated millions of Black people from the yoke of oppression and apartheid. To end, in conclusion, Nelson Mandela said, "For to be free is not merely to cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Sapers.
Thank you, Reverend. I've been asked also to speak a little bit. And I hear, you know, a lot when something like this occurs that everyone sees and it's a big dramatic and terrible tragedy and event, we'll say, what can we do? What can we do? And really what we can do is resolve to be part of the solution rather than part of the problem. Which means we have to be willing to truly see the problem. We have to be willing to understand the problem. And what the problem is overall is that our society, the structures we live in, whose systems and biases and privileges give permission for consistent and incessant violation of Black and Brown and Indigenous lives. If we want to be part of the solution, if we want to do something, we need to look at the structure of our social and economic values that keep people down even to the point of a knee on a neck. We can say, what a terrible tragedy, which it is, what an awful murder, but it's something that has happened over and over and over again through the centuries. We are connected to these murders. And it's not a blame and a shame thing I'm trying to say here. It's a responsibility thing. We are able to respond differently to this. We are able to see what's going on. If we keep in the blame and the shame and the guilt place, it's just a whirl of who's wrong and who's right, who's good and who's evil. No, we're all in this together and we're all capable of transforming. It's not going to be fixed in a day, nor any one individual witness. It's a long-term devotion to justice that we do step by step, inch by inch. And it isn't going to be easy or comfortable. In fact, that's a gift we can do. That's something we can do. Be willing to be uncomfortable as we dismantle the status quo because none of us are going to know what it looks like. None of us knows what this is going to look like. So we need to do a whole lot of listening and learning and letting in new stories so that we can come to the liberty and justice that we pledge to the flag, right? And I can give you just a little example for us, or it's not little, it's kind of big, I think. Again, I was, when I came here four years ago to start to serve First Parish in Milton, there was discussion about the Napontzit Bike Path. And I'm a biker, I like to bike. And I heard that it took years and years and years to get to the point where when I arrived about four years ago, it was almost open. Because there was a whole bunch of, NIMBY, not in my backyard, a whole bunch of fear about Mattapan and Milton having a connection where people could pass by each other, right? People could go into other people's neighborhoods. That was only four years ago. Four years later, we're launching the Napontzit Neighbors Together Fund, where we're building bridges. We went from NIMBY to neighbor in a very short time, folks. So we are able to do this. We're able to get to a place where we can work together, but it's not fun. It's not easy and it isn't anybody else's work. It isn't anybody else's fault. We are all in this together. And that's one of the things that Courageous Conversations has taught me over and over again. I've, I've been privileged to be part of the group since its founding. So I just want to hand it over to Karen Gross-Horan, who is one of the founders of Courageous Conversations.
Thank you, Lisa. I hope you'll use that as a sermon. That was really powerful. So yeah, so what can we as a town do? What can you as elected officials do? You know, it's not a thing where you check off the boxes, but there are strategies and there are plans and frameworks to put in place that can help to start to address and break down these systems of injustice. I'll say within Milton, you know, one of the finest examples, I think, is Citizens for a Diverse Milton. And they have existed for over 20 years. And they work on a monthly basis, meeting with the superintendent around issues of inequity and unfairness and bringing about change in the schools to meet the needs of our students of color. And what an incredible partnership. I've been involved in that for quite some time. And I think they're just a great model. Like, why don't we do that with the police? Citizens for a Diverse Milton Police, Citizens for a Diverse Milton Housing and Real Estate. You know, why don't we look at ways that we can bring implementation and change to these different aspects that have typically marginalized people of color within our society? So some other general things, you know, is the local police department outfitted with on-duty police body cams? Are we in a strategy or a place where we're planning for that? And as Noble mentioned, you know, employ evidence-based police de-escalation trainings. That is so essential. And you know, I don't even necessarily ever expect Milton will have these issues. But who knows, maybe somewhere off in the future, there will be that rogue police officer that, how did this ever happen in Milton? We'll be asking ourselves, you know? I'm sure Minnesota, Minneapolis is asking itself that same question. How did this happen here? But we have to be proactive to make sure those things don't happen here. We need to ensure that Black educators are hired in our schools where Black children are being taught, and not just for Black children, for all children. So they can see these Black role models as educators, as leaders, as shapers of their life and of their future. And also within the town, and this goes across all departments. Look at the recruiting and hiring strategies. And don't be happy with it until the demographic of your town employees meets that same population of Milton. What's that, just over 30% or around that? Until you see that representation of color in our town employment population, we probably haven't gotten to where we need to be. It should be represented across town and in, within our workforce. And advocate for affordable housing in Milton, not just meeting that state minimum. And we've got a ways to go before we get there. But advocate for what is important, and affordable housing is one of those things. One other thing I will say is, you know, work with the schools. There's this incredible program called Challenge Day. And it comes into the schools and it works with kids 7th to 12th grade. And it's an incredible devotion to a day of breaking down barriers, breaking down cliques, breaking down, oh yeah, they're the band people, oh yeah, they're the brainiacs, oh yeah, they're the jocks. Oh yeah, they're the Black people that sit together in the cafeteria. It breaks that down. Challenge Day, Google it. It will change your life if you see what these high schools have brought in to transform their lives for these students. It makes a shift for these kids for the rest of their life. And we have the perfect, perfect setting to do this in Milton. I don't know if you'll recall from the racism series in the Boston Globe, the spotlight series two years ago, but Milton was named one of four places, only one of four places in the entire state of Massachusetts that represents a sizable racial and economic diversity. Only three other places in the state have what we have. It is an incredible gift, and that's why people come to Milton. So we need to maximize those things that are working for us. And it makes me wonder, you know, about setting up a task force. Set up a town task force for equity and justice so that there's eyes on this. There's priority devoted to this. There's accountability in saying, what do we need to do to make this better and how do we go about it? I think without that attention and focus on it, we can flounder and try things, but unless there's people dedicated to the effort, we might not get anywhere or improve things or make measurable improvement towards justice and equity for all. So with that, thank you for your time. It's such, I don't know, an honor to do this work. I was so hesitant to do this work and it started back in 2016 before there even was an election. But there was so much bigotry and hatred swirling around the campaigns. I just couldn't take it anymore. And if it wasn't, I just said, if it wasn't me, then who? And if now, if not now, then when? And hopefully, this is that call to action for you, our elected officials. You know, we need, we need to move forward and change and advocate for justice and equity for all. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Reverend Ward. Thank you, Reverend Sapers. Apologies for mispronouncing your name. Comments or questions from the members?
I'll go last.
Thanks.
Ms. Collins, do you have something?
Oh, round of applause first. I thank you. I was on a webinar for Trauma-Informed Systemic Change that the Metropolitan Area Planning Council hosted today. And they talked about healing organizations, to be a healing organization. And they were talking about it in the, in the context of when you bring people back to work, you have to help them heal and you have to heal as, as one. And, and that made me think of all the communal healing that, that we need. And so I'm, I'm really grateful, not only for your words that I think are very loving and that's what people need right now, you know, truth is really loving. But, but some of these concrete steps, because that's the only way to move forward. And I would really welcome a conversation with the rest of the board about, about these. I mean, some of them are not necessarily ours to take, but to, but to pass on and to, and to help with, but, but things like the task force. Just think that's, for me, that's, that's really an important step.
I think you all spoke very eloquently. So thank you for coming tonight and for all of your remarks that I'm sure we'll all, sure, we've all taken to heart and many of the residents who are watching will take to heart. I would just add, Karen, I like some of your ideas that you suggested about what we could do. I think hiring is an important issue that we should be thinking about and making sure that staff reflects the diversity of the town. One thing I do want to mention, one of the, since Milton has been a diverse community for some time, one of the good things that I think about Milton is that our, our police department, not only Chief King, our current chief, but also Chief Wells and before him, Chief Murrin. I think all of them have made an effort to focus on community policing and de-escalating situations that require de-escalating. Whereas that may not have been a practice among police departments many, many years ago. I think at least in recent, last two or three decades, under our current and our former chiefs, we've, we've had a real emphasis on that, which is a good thing. So, and there's always more that we can do in those areas. But thank you for your eloquent words tonight and for coming to our meeting and sharing your thoughts. And I'm sure we'll have another session where we can take up some of Karen's ideas and consider what else we might do. There's always areas that we can improve. And many of this group has been involved with forming the Napontzit Neighbors Together Fund. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I was really concerned that we just tried to move forward quickly so we could fundraise, but thanks to your perseverance and Karen, all of your efforts, that has come together in a way that you proposed so that it's not just a Milton effort, but it's Milton and Boston working together. And I think our chair deserves some of the credit for that as well with roping in some of the city councilors and getting them interested and involved and making that happen. So that's another area where we can be working together and, and see some progress and help some people who are in real need. So thank you for everything.
Absolutely, yeah. And on that, we already have, I think, just over $800 in donations and we haven't even gone live yet. So that's kind of fascinating. People have found their way there ironically. But in a good sense, so I do expect we're going to really do well there. And you know, maybe we think beyond the COVID crisis. I mean, is there a beyond the COVID crisis? The impacts of this are going to be felt long and deep, you know, past where we are now. So you know, thoughts to sustaining this fund and what could that become? And how could that take shape to continue to support Milton and our neighbors? You know, if there's a tragic fire, you know, how do we reach out to support a family in that? Or, you know, any other deep impacts that might be seen in our communities? So yeah, open to all kinds of possibilities with this just being the start.
Mr. Wells?
Well, thank the three of you for your heartfelt words. Karen knows this. I'm not sure if Reverend Ward and Noble definitely doesn't know this, is that I was police chief before I stepped into this role and spent 35 years in policing. And I'm the husband and father of police officers. and I'm the husband and father of police officers. My wife is in Cambridge, my daughter is in Quincy, but I still remain as a police trainer. I've trained in this Commonwealth probably over 10,000 police officers and still teach today. Like you know, I've traveled the world from the violent streets of West Belfast to Syria to the West Bank and Gaza, to Tel Aviv and Jerusalem. And when I saw the incident in Minneapolis, it immediately reminded me to when I was, the marathon bombing in 2013. I was in a command center in Boston Police Headquarters when I first was shown the video of the Zadiah brothers planting the bombs on Boylston Street. Particularly the one that, the one that was placed by the Martin family, and you have this sick feeling in your stomach and you say, "Oh no, this can't be." As a policeman watching what happened in Minneapolis, I think if I said publicly what I thought I would do if I had been standing there, it'd probably be in the front page of the paper tomorrow, so I'm not going to say it, but like many officers who, you know, they're human beings, and I was sickened to even believe, I understood how it happened, but I was sickened to see it. I just couldn't, you know, just, how do you do this? To Karen's points, I do want to say this too. When you talk about, you know, some of the benefits of Milton and the diversity of the diverse community, going back to, as Katie mentioned, when Chief Murn was chief, when I was a deputy, when you police outside of yourself, the most important thing you have to do is the police department itself has to be reflective of the community, the image of the community, the people of the community, and the color of the community. The other night I was on the deck, Mr. Zulis was there, Mr. Dennehy was there, and there was the vision, an appropriate vision for the life of this victim. And when I looked around at the police officers who were there, they weren't helmets, they weren't sticks, but what I saw was the reflective of officers of color, officers of different races, officers who've built a trust with their community that took a long time. Just as you were talking, Karen, I'm thinking of all the different groups that we've parted with in the past 15 years, NAACP, Anti-Defamation League, NCCJ, Facing History in Ourselves in Brookline, U.S. Department of Justice. I mean, these are hard things, and this is going to be even harder. Chief King and I have talked about this. I mean, in my stomach, as someone who spent my life wearing a gun and a badge, I'm just sick. But if there's one thing I believe in, and I use this quite very often, it comes from St. Thomas Aquinas, it's a quote about faith. If you believe in faith, as St. Thomas Aquinas said, then no explanation is necessary. If you have no faith, no explanation is possible. Have faith in this community, have people in the, that make up this community, the people who live in this community, and the leadership of this community. And most important, have faith in the police department of this community. They are the single most diverse agency of government in our town. And I know that violence is part of policing, but murder is not, and it never will be, and it never shall be, ever. My first week on this job in 1984, a policeman was viciously murdered on the steps of the Parkway Methodist at 5:30 on a Sunday morning. I never forgot it. I hadn't even worked a shift. My first shift was going to the funeral. It shaped my whole career. And, you know, commissioners like Louis Gross in Boston, really very brilliant people who are out there in policing today, they get it. They get it. And change is never easy, but you are correct, Karen. We need to bring positive change from this because we can't afford this any further. We are the greatest nation in the world, the greatest. We are the home of the free, and we need, as leaders, all of us, paid, unpaid, elected and unelected, to ensure that each and every day, so that George Floyd is never happens again. When I hear the, when I hear the words, "I can't breathe," that cop put his throat, his knee on the throat of every single decent human being that lives in this country. That's what he did. And we cannot accept that. And I think that each of us appreciate the fact that, I wasn't surprised when I walked on that deck and saw a pack the other night, I wasn't surprised when I saw Quincy packed last night, and I wasn't surprised at the number of people that have come out in the city of Boston. Now is the time to open your voice and say enough. So, I'm sorry I spoke so long, but it's been something very personal to me when you spend your whole life in this, just, and you're very fortunate. Chief King is a very bright guy, great people who work here. And any of you who know, like, our officers in the schools, James, Mr. Jet, when he talked the other night, he made point of talking about the police officers of the intellect. So have faith in them, they have faith in you, and collectively we'll get through this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you all. I'm sorry I spoke so long.
No, not at all.
Not at all.
Thank you. Karen, there is an event tomorrow night, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mike. I know, I appreciate that. I was thinking, oh, I didn't mention the Stand Out Against Racism tomorrow, where we hope to line the parkway, both sides, and hopefully the median too, from Canton Ave down into Matapan Square, with people socially distanced and wearing masks and just standing out because they know what is going on is not acceptable, and standing out against racism in solidarity. I cannot wait to see what this looks like. It's going to be so powerful, powerful, and what will happen is everybody's standing on both sides and in the median, and we will start at Canton Ave with a kneel that will ripple like a wave all the way down the parkway. And we hope to capture that on a drone camera, so I don't know if I will ever witness anything more powerful, but I'm really looking forward to it, and I hope that we can see you all with us in some way, in standing with us in solidarity against racism.
Mr. Chair, don't let Karen go yet.
Yeah.
Karen, were you on the deck the other night, Karen? Were you only in Milton the other night?
I was.
So, the one thing?
I spoke, you didn't hear me?
I know, that's what I'm talking, what I, no, that's why I'm bringing it up, is, are there speakers tomorrow night?
No. There are not speakers. This was just a standout. We didn't think that, yeah, a rally was the kind of thing we needed. This is just neighbors.
I wish I had known, it would have been, okay, it would have been much more effective if you had a really good sound system because there were some great words, and it was just.
Yeah, but we don't want to do a gathering, we want to do a distance. And it's from 6:00 to 6:30, so, you know, it's not going to be long, it's going to be very poignant, but would love you to come out and stand. A lot of it will be some, you know, silence and the kneeling, you know, for, you know, to commemorate this awful event. We really hope you come.
Thank you. Ms. Collins?
So, I just wanted to ask if there was anything you needed from the town?
That's what, I was talking about the sound system, that's what I wanted to say. They need a sound system.
I don't think we do, I appreciate that. You know, we're looking for a few more volunteers to be block captains, just to enforce the social distancing, make sure people have masks, masks if they needed, and just to kind of help us with the process. So, you know, if anybody wants to be, and we have a sign-up genius, but if anybody wants to be a block captain, they can meet on Parkway Methodist lawn at 5:15 for the six o'clock standout.
And Chief John King has been very supportive in making sure, because it's Blue Hill Parkway, we also had to talk to the state police, he really helped make that happen.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Yeah, there's been a lot of coordination between the chief and Annette Correa and Karen to try to make this work well. In connection with that, there is obviously much more to be done, and we can't let this drop, and we will continue to do what we can do and put these things, discuss these things and take action. But one small thing that we have before us tonight, one small step, is in connection with the standout or in solidarity tomorrow night, we do have a proposed proclamation for a day of reflection for seeking equity and justice for all for tomorrow in connection with the standing. So, everyone's received the proclamation? Is there?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation of reflection. I only one question, I'll make the motion, then we can get back to a discussion. I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been made, the second, any further discussion?
Are you sure it's strong enough?
Well, I don't know.
I was, I only got to read it just, I was out all day, so I only got to read it quickly before we started. I just want to make sure that it's reflection, doesn't seem like a strong enough word to me, but I just throwing it out there.
I see, you're talking about the title, not the body of it.
Yeah, I'm talking about the title. Is reflection strong enough? I open this up to everybody.
I think it's appropriate, I don't know if it's, if there's something stronger, but I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Unless anyone has a different word that they want to use.
I suppose in a proclamation, you couldn't say something like a call to action.
What about reflection and witness?
A day of reflection and witness.
It sounds okay.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. I, I'm just, I was just, I didn't get to read the whole, but I get where you went with it, and I get where I just want. I just think we truly, as a community, this is stronger than just saying, you know, we're a no-place-for-hate community. This is like, we repudiate, you know, we just, I don't even know if we repudiate, it's just, I speak from my heart tonight, if you haven't figured that out.
Mr. Chair, do you want to read it? I thought it was, well, you drafted it, I believe.
I like that idea.
Do you want to read it?
We'd read it after it was, if it was approved, we'd read it if it was approved, but happy to read it now if that would be.
No, I'm good, I'm good with it, you don't have to read it. I'm sure, confident that what you wrote is applicable.
Yeah, it's more for the town purposes though, isn't it? For people that are attending or will see this meeting later to hear it, right?
Because it's not going to be read there tomorrow night?
No.
I agree with Katie, I think we should read it.
Read it.
I agree. I, I think we should, I think we should do a vote before we read it, but we can read it before if you want.
Okay.
Well, it's been moved in seconded. Do you want to just call for roll call and then read it?
Any further discussion?
No.
Friendly amendment, it is, did we add witness?
I haven't, I haven't added.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
We'll ask Hillary to add that, and, because I would like to get it out tonight because it is tomorrow, so if we can get it on the website and the face thing and the twit thing and all of that stuff, that would be helpful.
Call a vote.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Yes. So, the proclamation that has now been approved reads as follows. "Day of reflection and witness for seeking equity and justice for all, June 4, 2020. Whereas, all acts of subtle and overt oppression, racism, and injustice anyway undermine the promise of equity and justice in the town of Milton. And whereas, the targeting of people of color and the oppression, racism, injustice, and violence that they suffer is abhorrent to our shared humanity. And whereas, recent examples of systemic violence against people of color, the killings of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Breonna Taylor in Louisville, and Ahmaud Arbery in Georgia, have once again shocked the conscience of law-abiding and peace-loving people everywhere. And whereas, the pain of oppression, racism, injustice, and violence is felt in the town of Milton. And whereas, all people of goodwill must stand together against oppression, racism, injustice, and violence. And whereas, all people of goodwill must seek ways to eradicate the stain of oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against people of color from our town and our country. And whereas, black lives matter, and we stand in solidarity against racism. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of the town of Milton, hereby proclaim and recognize June 4, 2020, as a day of reflection and witness for seeking equity and justice for all. And we urge all residents to reflect on how they can actively help to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against people of color from our town and our country." Signed, it'll be signed June 3, 2020, each of the members.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd ask that we have Mr. Dennehy publish this as a full-page ad next week in the Milton Times, from all of us.
Okay. I don't know if, I don't think we need to vote on that.
No, they would need a vote. Get that, Hillary?
All right, all right. Thank you all. I apologize for having to cut us off now. We do have some other business, but it's going to continue, obviously. We have a lot of work to do, but we have to start, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Karen or Lisa, if you need anything tomorrow, whether it's the 11th hour or not, just, just reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Reverend.
Okay.
Have faith, have faith.
You mean the good work. Good night.
All right.
Good night, thank you for your time.
Good night, thank you.
All right. Item six, update on the Ice House. This is an update on a conversation. Mr. Bosworth and Mr. Driscoll, representatives of DA Bosworth, the developer of the Ice House project, reached out to advise us on their revisions, their proposed revisions to their plan. They've been working with mass housing, they had, they've had some input from the town, and we had a telephone call with them last week, I don't know, I think it was Friday, and they will be rolling out their revised plan to the town, to the town, and they'll be, I believe to this board at some point, but they'll also be moving through the zoning board of appeals. There are three primary changes. They have reversed the site plan and reduced the massing, and they have reduced the number of units from 58 to 52, and they have included a 2,500-square-foot commercial, commercial section, and they're also working on some other matters. Those are the primary three changes to the plan. They intend to go before the zoning board of appeals, but they also want to continue with this board. So, the participants in the call were myself, Ms. Collins, Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Clark from the planning department, Ms. Quinn from the planning department, Ms. Taglias, the chair of the planning board, and I think that was it, and then Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Bosworth from DA Bosworth. So that's the update on the Ice House. Comments or questions on that? Mr. Wells? Nope, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
I got it, I'm back, I'm back. I'm in this new computer hi-tech tonight. So, so a couple of thoughts, are we still in one building? Does it still remain as one unit? One, one, was it separate? Is this, I'd heard some discussion about a separate commercial unit versus the residence, is it still just one unit?
This is the one unit.
And the 2,500 square foot would be like a commercial condo, am I correct? Because that's, this is a condo project. Did anyone ask that question?
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's commercial, obviously. I don't know if it'll be commercial condo or not, I'm not sure that that's, that's set forth.
Okay, it's a good step. How big, I wish Allison was here, maybe Mr. Dennehy can hear, 2,500 square feet would be like, how, maybe Katie knows, how many square feet of commercial are in the Hendry's project? You know, Katie offhand?
It's under 4,000, little under four.
Okay. So this would be a little more than half of that, half of what they have. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm glad they're willing to continue working with the town. I think if there was some way we could do something collaboratively, because I, I think that, it sounds like we're moving in the right direction here, and we're, we're heading in a way that is more consistent with what the town was looking for through the zoning that was put in place. So I'm happy to hear that they're interested in working with us.
Yeah, they've indicated, they indicated, Melinda, you can correct me, they indicated a desire to work on parallel tracks. They want to, they want to move forward with the ZVA, but they want to keep, keep working with, you know, our board as well.
Do you think we should appear at the ZVA, and maybe, the chair should speak to, I mean, then we could all go, maybe have the space, the chair speak? I don't know, I just, I think that, I know Mr. Lennon likes us to weigh in, we have weighed in with our comments, but there's so much anticipation and anxiety over this happening, especially that commercial aspect of it, for the residents.
I think, Richard, it would be subject to, you know, our board having a consensus.
Okay. We have time, right? We have time before we get to that?
Yes, and they're going to continue to, as I said, you know, my memory, Melinda, my notes, I think they're going to, they're going to roll out the plans. Yes, and they're going to continue to, as I said, you know, my, my memory, Melinda, my notes, I think they're going to, they're going to roll out the plans. I think at one of our meetings, I invited them to do that, and I think they intend to do that. So, so you'll hear more specifics. You'll hear more specifics, you know, in the not-too-distant future.
Right, right. That, that's, that's what my notes say, that they, they were interested in people being able to see, because there's been a redesign too of, sort of, they had more aesthetic qualities, if you will, to make them more aesthetic. So, I, yeah, I, I believe that. And then maybe to explain some other amenities and things that they're thinking about.
Can we put this on for a future agenda so that we can take it up? I know we're running short on time here tonight, so if we could discuss it again at a future agenda.
I agree.
We may have, we may have the developers in at that future agenda.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's item six. We have less than a half hour because the Affordable Zoning Board of Appeals takes over at that point, so we're going to do our best. Item seven is approval of the, pardon me, Southeastern Public Employee Association memorandum of agreement. Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I happily bring this to you this evening. Some great negotiations over the past 14 months with the Southeastern Public Employee Association. Margaret Walsh, Philip Driscoll, Mary Fitzgerald, Tricia Kelly. So we have agreed in principle to a memorandum of agreement for a collective bargaining agreement that will be in effect for a three-year period from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. The specifics of which I'll touch upon quickly. In essence, cost of living rate, raise, increase for wages, FY '22%. That'll be retroactive back to July 1st of this fiscal year. Effective July 1st of 2021, a 1.5% cost of living increase, as well as a 1.5% cost of living increase for the third year of the contract. One of the other highlights of the negotiations and the memorandum of agreement was we rolled back their 20-year step and in essence moved it to a 10-year step. And on July 1st of this coming fiscal year, a little less than a month from now, those that qualify for the 10-year step will receive an additional 1% to their wages. And similarly, on the first day of the third year of the contract, July 1st of 2021, an additional 1% for those that qualify for the 10-year step. So, very good negotiation, great group to work with, very hard and dedicated employees in the town. They're the people you see behind the curtain sometimes, or they're front and center when, when you're dealing with, with town government. So, very happy with this and I'm seeking board's approval tonight.
Comments and questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum.
A motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement with the Southeastern Public Employee Association as presented.
Second.
This has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Uh, yes.
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 Wells.
Yes.
Yes. Item eight, thank you for a great job, Mike.
Thank you. Yep, and I can't thank this group enough. They, they are the people that get stuff done in town government. Most people don't know who they are, but they, they're a very dedicated and vibrant part of town government. So, thank you.
Thank you for our partners there and for the union members and thank you. Don't mean to gloss over it, but we're running on time here. Item eight, opening of the July special town warrant. We have a subsequent town meeting scheduled for July 28th, 2020, to take up the warrant articles that won't be taking up in our virtual town meeting this June 15th. And so we need a motion to open the warrant. Yep, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to open the warrant for the July 28th, 2020 special town meeting.
Second.
This has been made in second. All those in favor, it'll be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins. Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Yes.
Wells. Yes.
Yes. All right, item nine is approval of the articles for that warrant for the July 28th special town meeting. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of the, of the articles. Is it eight? Yes, we have, we, yes, we have eight articles.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
I know there was a, a planning board article, a planning board article or two that was, that was coming in very recently, which we could be listed under other proposed articles. Town council is, is asking that we defer that and specifically mention them in next, next week's agenda.
Okay.
Are we, are we, these are in addition to the, the?
I believe so.
Mr. Chair, if there's no, go ahead, go ahead, Melinda.
Oh, no, I, it just, it just came in right as our meeting was starting.
And this is in addition to the affordable housing, the amending the Great Estates bylaw? This is something different?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Has to be something else in Milton Village.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for all to accept, can I, do we, can we waive the reading? Or no? Do we need to read them all?
I, I, I don't know.
I guess for the public, we should just state what they're about.
That's the answer, that's the answer.
All right, so I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion to accept the following articles into the warrant for the July 28th special town meeting. Home rule petition prudent, am I, is that in there? That's in, right? Prudent investment of trust assets. The Milton Village mixed-use planned unit development overlay zoning. This, this is the advised, the revised as of May 2020, and the changes are detailed in Milton Village red line. Next, Milton Village District Improvement Revolving Fund. Next, Milton Village Historic Preservation Revolving Fund. Except Master in Law Chapter 40, Section 3, carryover and expenditure of local option. Except Master in Law Chapter 44, Bravo, Section 3 to Section 7, Community Preservation Act. Authorize the Select Board to establish a 20 mile an hour safety zones within the town. I added those bad, if you'll take that as a, so that people know it's in Milton. Provision of Affordable Housing Amendment, amend the Great Estates by, the Great Estates bylaw. And the other proposed articles, amendment to the zoning bylaws, Milton, am I reading that part or no? Are we doing that later?
We're going to wait on that one, I believe.
All right, so I'm leaving out I, so it's A through H. I think I got them all.
Yep.
Okay, so, yes, never mind. The Great Estates is not going?
No, that's in.
That's in. It, it, Mike Dennehy was just talking about the ones that came in through email. So, yes, Great Estates is going.
All right, Mr. Chair. So I, amendment to zoning bylaws, Milton Village Central Act, Section 3, subsection 1, is that going or not?
No, not that one. My I is different.
Is that, wait, I haven't looked at, is that a replace, is that the one that just came in? Is that a replacement version of?
That's the one that just came in.
That's right. That's the one that came in, but I, I did not, I did not hear that it was replacing the Great Estates bylaw.
No, I just opened it. It's a different, it's.
Right, it's different.
Not Great Estates, it's the, it relates to Milton Village. I thought it was the revised version of the Milton Village zoning, but it's different. Okay.
So if I may, if I may.
Oh, yes.
If I may, the motion that Mr. Wells made with everything that he included, including the amending the Great Estates, the Great Estates bylaw. That's everything that we would include at this point. We have additional articles that were, that we received today from the planning board that we will put on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Well, that's going to, that's going to involve reopening the warrant. We.
That's right.
Why don't we want to include it tonight if it relates to the Milton Village zoning?
The only reason is we haven't seen it yet. And so, that would be the only reason.
Okay, I mean, I'll defer to what the majority wants, but I think that the planning board is asking, is putting it forward and it's related to Milton Village, which is already going, I would put it forward. I would include it in the warrant.
I agree.
Best step to wait. Mike Dennehy, can you help us out? Why did?
Yeah, Kevin had asked, town council had asked if, if we had time. We do have, we do have a, a ambiguous other proposed articles. He thought because it came in, in, in the late hour that you may want to address it specifically at a future agenda. That, that would give us, next Wednesday night is the 10th, and Hillary can, can pick me up if, if I fall down here. But I think that's when we, when we need to get this closed and get it down to the warrant committee so that we can successfully post July 28th. But I, I also understand what Member Conlon's saying, but that was just Kevin's preliminary advice when I spoke to him, it came in a little after 4:00 PM today.
So let me ask you a question. Does the warrant need, not need to be closed tonight? Is the deadline next week rather than tonight, today? The published deadline?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Hillary, do you want to chime in with the, with the quick schedule there if you have it in front of you? I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Dennehy. The, the schedule is pretty tight. The warrant does need to close today. We're reporting the accepted articles to the warrant committee tomorrow. But there, there is some freedom in our printing schedule to add one additional article if we, you know, the, the warrant, the advertised warrant closing date was today. So, we are, you know, we are okay to close today and reopen if we need to make an addition.
How about, Mr. Chair, could we do this?
Taggias is, is here and I think she wanted to say something.
I think actually we're losing a little bit. We're turning this into a free-forming conversation, so let's try to keep a little focus on it, all right?
So I'm coming back to you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells.
So, Mr. Chair, I agree with Katie. And if, what I'd like to do is if, if, let's approve it, subject to any final edits from town council. How's that? Can we live with that?
We can do that, we can do that.
So I make a motion, we include it.
So you're going to, you can add it to your motion?
I'm going to add it, I'm going to add it to my motion. So this is going to be number I. Amendment to the zoning bylaw, Milton Village Central Act, this is Central Act, Section 3, subsection 1.
All right. Motion's been made in, and I believe seconded. Has motion been seconded? Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Well, I would just say that, you know, I am a little concerned with nine articles going forward. I think the Milton Village ones are very important to go forward. And if we do need to remove any, you know, I would consider the prudent investment of trust assets or maybe one of the others. But if we think we can get through nine in one night, then, then I guess we should include them all, but.
All right.
Something for us to think about as we, as we go forward, whether we want to take any out.
I agree. I'd rather try and climb the mountain and fail than not be able to climb the mountain at all.
All right. All those in favor, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Yes. Item 10, we're going to, the motions were approved to close the warrant.
A motion that we close the warrant for the July 28th special town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item 11, approval of the response to the open meeting law complaint made by Cindy Christensen. This is the second open meeting law complaint. The first one we responded to and this one had to do with contention that the Select Board's review of her first complaint in executive session was a violation of the open meeting law. We have a response that has been prepared by town council at our request and essentially, the response, there are some specifics to it, but that the response is that we comply with the open meeting law, that, that our meeting in executive session and discussion, discussion of that item was in accordance with the guidance provided by the Office of the Attorney General with respect to the open meeting law and that there was no violation by this board by entering, by entering into executive session on this item. So that, that is the response. Comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve and issue the response to the open meeting law complaint filed by Cindy Christensen as drafted by town council.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
Yes. Item 12, appointment to the traffic commission.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint, by some Joe Sloan of 55 Concord Ave, to the traffic commission.
Second.
Oh, she's been made in seconds. A roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes, and thank you to Joe for stepping up.
Can I just ask? I'll finish the vote first, Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Can, Mr. Dennehy, can you, can you advise, who's leaving? Is someone leaving or are we adding a person?
I believe it's Lee Toma that's stepping down.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you to Lee for his service.
That's why I wanted to ask, yes.
Yeah, I believe I saw an email from Lee. I'll, I'll have to verify that in the morning, but I believe Lee Toma.
Whoever it is, can we put it on for a later, a later meeting to officially thank that person? Is that, would that be all right?
Yeah, we'll put, we'll put that on for the next, next, next week. Item 13, reappointment of the Conservation Commission is going to be deferred, I believe.
That's correct.
We have 15 minutes. Mr. Dennehy, item 14, Town Administrator's Report.
Very quickly, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I'd like to thank Mr. Farrington for his service on the Select Board. It was a privilege working with him. I knew a little bit about Mr. Farrington before he joined the board. I love everything about him now, so, thank you, Tony. You've been a great sounding board for me. And it's been a pleasure working with you. So, thank you. Good luck, Tony.
Thank you, Mike, of course.
So, so you stole the thunder of the chair's report. Which is to recognize that this is.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm just joking, Mike. That this is Tony Farrington's last meeting, we think. We don't have one between now and next Wednesday. This will be Tony's last meeting with us. And I'm glad you're there to, I'm glad to see. The hair looks good.
Yeah, I did a haircut.
So I just want to say that it's, it's, it's been a pleasure. Tony, when he spoke, when he weighed in on an issue, he brought a perspective to it that was often missing. And I appreciated his, his perspective and, and his humor throughout this. So I appreciate Tony's, Tony's service. The town appreciates Tony's service. And he will be continuing on the Fire Chief Selection Committee for a period of time. But, but certainly, you know, certainly in the past two months, when, when we had to meet quite a bit more than is normal, you know, Tony was there most of the time and it was a lot more than was anticipated or expected. And so, and so for that, certainly the town, the town is thankful. So, that's all that I have in my report. Thank you, Tony. Members' reports. Ms. Collins.
Well, very quickly, I, I can't really say it any better, but, but I, I am very glad for all I learned from, from Tony and the perspective thing, right on, Mike. And I'm going to miss you. And I, I wish you every happiness and success and some fun eventually.
You, you don't have to miss him. I'm sure he's going to show up for citizen speak.
Oh, 100%, absolutely. I intend to, very much.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Send you reminders.
I'll, I'll go out of order to Ms. Conlon.
Tony, I'm, I'm going to miss you also. I've enjoyed working with you. And I also wanted to thank you for stepping up to serve the town over these past two years as a member of this board. And, you know, for everyone who serves in town government in some capacity, whether it's elected office, appointed office, or as a town meeting member, I, I'm always reminded of the, the famous passage from Teddy Roosevelt about the man in the arena. And not everyone, there's a lot of critics out there. There's a lot of people who weigh in on Facebook and who have a lot to say about things, good or bad. But there's not a lot of the people who step up to serve, and you were one of them, Tony. You, you ran a couple of campaigns, you ran for state rep. So you've had a lot of interest in serving the town. And you've served on the pilot committee for us as our representative there for two years. I know Mike mentioned that you've been serving on the Fire Chief Selection Committee. And I know you've been a voice for a lot of residents who have called you about a stop sign or a traffic issue in their neighborhood. And you've been very responsive to those residents in bringing those issues to the town administrator's attention, the appropriate department's attention, the board's attention. So thank you for all that you've done and thank you for serving in your wills to run for office and to serve. We're going to miss you and I'm sure we'll see you around town. You've indicated you might even look for, to be involved in some other capacity in the future. So hopefully that will happen and I, and I look forward to, to keeping in touch and staying in touch. It's been nice to know you and to get to know you over these last few years and I wish you all the best.
Mr. Wells.
Mr. Farrington, so your time here was short, but it doesn't really matter how long a person spends. I'll leave you with one simple quote. And when you leave, that's from someone who was very close to me in this life, and I've never forgotten it. When you leave something that you've given a great deal to and, kid, as you know, we all know, you have to give a great deal to be in this. and kid, as you know, we all know, you have to give a great deal to be on this board, ask yourself a single question, is the place and the community, our community, a little bit better this week as you leave than it was before you arrived? And if you can answer that question with a yes, then you've accomplished more than most could ever think of in life. So with that, you certainly have accomplished giving a great deal on your time here, so I thank you and wish you the best. And thank you, Mr. Chair, and all of you for indulging tonight and giving me that time. It's never emotional when I say it in my head, and then when I go to give it, it gets a little emotional. But thank you for letting me speak on Kim Casey's, this was truly her family, and I-
No, no, no worries at all. Mr. Farrington.
Well, harkening back to a moment ago, Mr. Chair, when you paid me a lovely compliment and said that you will miss my wit in keeping with that compliment, and understanding that brevity is the essence of wit, I will keep this short. I, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Michael Denny. Yeah, Mike, you've been great, you do a fantastic job to each and every one of my four colleagues. You've also been wonderful, I've learned a great deal in serving alongside you. And I think the Milton, the town of Milton is in fantastic and spectacular hands with you moving forward. I'd like to thank my mother and father, they've been very supportive in everything that I've done. And, you know, last but not least, I'd like to thank the voters of the town of Milton for placing their trust and their confidence in me and, and electing me and voting for me. It's a sacred thing, and I mean that genuinely, very much, it's a sacred thing to be, to be elected, and I really appreciate it, you know, I've found, in the last two years, I've, I've learned a great deal. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you, from Michael, from the voters, from the system, serving. And, you know, I made a decision in January, it's just, I'd like to give 100% of myself to all my commitments, and I found that I'm unable to do that to the extent and the degree that I would like, and if I can't, I, you know, I don't feel that, that, you know, I'm worthy of the position. So that's why I'm stepping down, but it was a decision that I struggled with and that I wrestled with, and it's bittersweet, it really is, and, and there's a portion of me that, that is going to miss it. But I think down the road, I'll revisit it and, you know, continue to stay active in the meantime. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Tony. I, I think the, the planning board is getting ready, we've got, I think, seven minutes to go. Now, do we need to, Mr. Denny, do we need to do item 21, and do we need the executive session?
We can defer that, yeah, we can defer that, certainly.
Both?
The executive session, we can defer, I know that much, let me look at the agenda. And the conveyance is not ready, that's not ready.
Okay, so item 21, we'll defer, and then, okay, so, and without objection, we can defer the executive session as well unless, unless Mike tries to go forward on it, and I, you know, I'm not, so I-
Both are something we can take up on July 10th, or June 10th, rather.
Okay, all right, let's, what about the meeting minutes? Are we prepared to move forward in the meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, before we go on to that, under either the topics aren't reasonably anticipated or the members' reports, did we want to just touch briefly on doing, whether we want to consider doing a video for the high school graduates?
Oh, yes, Ms. Conlon had raised the issue of perhaps doing a video for the high school graduates. Mr. Lynch was interested in that as well, so, Ms. Conlon.
Well, the idea would just be to, because the high school is not having an in-person ceremony, and there's no prom, there's no banquet for the athletic events, there's no awards night. There's been a lot of efforts to recognize the high school class of 2020 in some way, whether it's Milton High School or residents in the town who attend in other schools, such as Blue Hills Regional or one of the private schools. The idea was just for the board and for some of our members of the board, the town administrators, some of our key department heads to maybe tape a brief video wishing the graduates well and congratulating them. Generally, we take part in their commencement exercise by attending it and being in the procession, but we're not able to do that this year, so do we want to consider a 15 to 20-minute tape with everybody, maybe recording up to one minute, just a message or an inspirational saying or a message, congratulations to the students, so that they know that we're supporting them? There's been, there's been a lot, an effort by the boosters to put lawn signs at the home of every graduate. There's been a Facebook page, Adopt a Milton Senior, that's asked residents to recognize the graduates. So it would be one additional way of providing some additional congratulations and recognition for the class of 2020. And Mike Lynch has graciously agreed to work with us to tape the messages. We could do that tomorrow afternoon, between, I think, 2:00 and 5:00, Mike, over at his, over at the studio, the MPeg studio, and, and so I'm very grateful to Mike for talking with me about it and being willing to make the tape.
Yeah, we're here until 6:00 tomorrow.
6:00, so 2:00 to 6:00, then, Mike. We've already had, we've already had at least one department head who's responded that he's interested in participating.
Okay, Senator Timmelti is sending a video over as well.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I'd very much like to participate as well, Mike. I don't know if I'll be able to make that time tomorrow, but maybe there's an alternative. We can do it over Zoom or something, where I can record that and send it to you. But I think it's a great idea, and, you know, I'm definitely in favor of it. I think it, I think it carries on, number one, I think it's more necessary this year than any other that we participate, given the fact that these seniors are missing out on a, a rite of passage, a milestone in their life, and to the extent that we can make it as normal as it would be in other years, which is impossible, but to the extent that we're able to. And there's a long and storied tradition of the selectmen attending Milton High School graduations, and I think it's important to continue and keep that tradition alive.
I-
Yeah, Ms. Collins.
I think for me, I'm going to really miss it this year, and I, I just, I don't know, I want them to know that we haven't forgotten about them and that we've been, and it's not just because I have a graduate myself, but that, that, you know, we've been thinking about them all this time and, and hoping that things will turn out better also for them, for their, whatever they're going on to next, and, and so I would like to do it.
All right, so that'll be available, I actually have the Board of Appeals is coming in.
Okay.
Two minutes, so that'll be available. Without objection, I'll defer the approval of the meeting minutes, item 18. Item 19, can we agree, and I intended to reach out to the candidates running today, but I'll reach out to them tomorrow, can we agree tentatively to a meeting that's Wednesday night at 7:00? For a future meeting? I think we have it. Richard, you can weigh in, I need to weigh. I'm against the other candidates, they can make it.
I'm already in here.
Oh.
So, so next Wednesday night at 7:00, the reason it's later, it's because we, they may want to, they may need to, they'll need to be sworn in.
Right, well, that's the customary time, anyway.
Mr. Wells.
Hillary, we, can we have 7:00? Hillary?
Thank you, yes, 7:00 is free.
I was just trying, I, I wanted to check the last question, I'll handle it, Mr. Chair. Whether I'm here or not, I wanted to make sure she was okay with it.
All right, well, as long as you're available, then we can, we can go ahead. All right, future agenda items, I think, is there anything anyone has? Because I really want to get out of here for the Board of members. Put it on a list, you can send it to us. Item 21, without objection, we'll defer, and item 22, the executive session, without objection, we'll defer, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes, my last vote, yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes, thank you all, we'll see you again next Wednesday, June 10th at 7:00. Thank you, Tony Farrington.